Trish Elglieson, Assistant City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, October 2nd, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for October 2nd, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include in-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input regarding the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log on into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access codes that appear on the broadcast and live stream and are posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must include a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for tonight's meeting is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Via phone. Resnick.
Here.
Rousseau.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Action item number three on tonight's agenda will be pulled due to lack of notification. And thank you. And Mayor, I will turn it back over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Trish. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda tonight, we've got four presentations. The first presentation is Class of 2023 Rising Star Award to Police Lieutenant Rick Fulmer and viewing a video.
All right, I believe somebody's probably here to address. Yeah, thank you, come on up. And we can go ahead and go right to the, yeah, so that everybody at home can hear you too.
Not used to being at the podium during activities.
That's okay.
Lieutenant Rick Fulmer recently was presented with the, one of our Rising Star Awards from Telegraph Herald and from our Biz Times publication, which recognizes rising young professionals for the work that they're doing in the community. Lieutenant Fulmer was recognized for the many things that he does with the Dubuque Police Department, including his work on the emotional intelligence training, his leadership with the department, as well as his volunteers that is in the community, just doing a lot of different things that are really vital work for his department and for Dubuque as a whole. So we're here to recognize him, here formally with the Dubuque Police Department, and to present you with your award, and thank you so much for everything that you do.
Thank you very much.
Got to pose for the photos, yeah, yeah. Would you like to say anything, Lieutenant Fulmer?
I didn't have anything planned, but no, thank you very much, thank you, and especially to Assistant Chief Joe Mesrich. I found out, he asked me for my resume, which kind of worried me at first. And so I said, sure, here you go. And then I got a call from the TH, and I'm sorry, I thought it was a media inquiry, so I sent it down to the PIO. Anyway, they called me back and said, no, you won this award. So thanks, thanks for that, to Assistant Chief Mesrich, and to Chief Johnson, thank you for the recognition, and to everybody, appreciate the opportunity to serve the City of Dubuque, look forward to many years to come.
Thank you so much. It does say video here on the agenda, do we have a video that shows all this too? Yes, we do, Eric, it looks like we can roll that video, please.
Be inquisitive, be curious, the best officers succeed because that, and Rick is one of those that does that, does that well, being curious, being just inquisitive about all things different, and then looking at how he can apply that.
When you're training somebody, you're teaching them, and you see that lightbulb moment, right, you see when they get it, and all of a sudden, you know, you have a partner now instead of somebody that you're training, right, because they're doing things to a level higher than what you were doing, and you start to learn things from them.
For a small enough department, you start to hear things about people, and you start to hear, here's a guy that kind of, you know, gets it. Where we really started crossing paths is when we started getting into the emotional intelligence training.
I think the critical thing for us is, you know, in law enforcement, recognizing when, you know, you're sort of emotionally hijacked, but then when you see it in somebody else, right? We always talk about, you know, I've got your six, I've got your back. Well, that means I'm not going to let you do anything stupid, I'm not going to let you do anything that you're going to regret.
Saw the future, knows that this is the right thing to do.
I have a responsibility, you know, to look out for the people that I'm working with, especially as a supervisor, you know, you're just as responsible, you know, for their actions as they are.
As we presented this in even our old world, and how we were trying to get, you know, buy-in within the department, it was kind of like, okay, that's just Rick coming with this idea again, but he stayed the course with it.
You know, and it's not always about being nice or kind either, right, it's about being intentional and purposeful in your decision-making, so that way you experience less regret, do the right things for the right reasons.
In our field, that was a big, that was a big thing.
Using that consequential thinking to figure out, okay, I'm headed down this path, you know, where's this going to lead, where's this going to end up?
Saw the future, knows that this is the right thing to do.
And if you can sort of forecast and have some foresight to look at, you know, what's going to be the result here, and if you don't like it, then make a change, you know, do something differently, don't continue, you know, doing something that you know you're going to regret in the end.
It was not popular in law enforcement.
It's easier said than done, right? So in the moment, I think if you just stop for just half a second and give yourself a chance to think before you respond, and then, like I said, you're more intentional and less reactional. That takes practice. It's always my favorite, you know, seeing the group, you know, at the beginning, and then, you know, watching them throughout, you know, watching them grow, that is a source of inspiration, it makes you want to, it makes you better. If you want to accomplish anything, teach somebody else how to do what it is that you are doing.
Well, I want to make sure that we say thank you to the Telegraph Herald for recognizing community members in this way, I think it's just such a great award to be able to recognize people in our community, so thanks for being here and presenting that. And Lieutenant, thank you so much for all the work that you do, especially for forging new paths in this way, it's very important work, and we really appreciate your service, so thank you.
Next is a presentation for FBI National Academy graduation to Assistant Chief of Police Jeff, I'm sorry, Joe Mesrich.
So I'm honored, I mean, I get two officers of Dubuque Police Department tonight being honored in front of City Council, and this is a great testament to them and to our department. I will want to say one thing, though, a great sign of a leader, you know, is humility. I had to order both of them to be here tonight, because they were not going to do this, they didn't want any part of it, but it is, it's with a great honor that I get to announce that Assistant Chief Joe Mesrich graduated from the FBI National Academy. So kind of put this in a little bit of perspective, the National Academy is run by the FBI, it is, it's pretty prestigious, you have to be nominated, you have to go through a vetting process and then be selected, and you get selected quite a ways out, and you have to meet some requirements to get in, but number one being that you have to be at that high level, that high level of your career in law enforcement and willing to contribute back to it, that's the other part, when you come back, you have to contribute. Assistant Chief Mesrich was graduated from the 287th class of the FBI National Academy, it began in 1972, the press release says three members have been, there's actually been seven members of Dubuque Police Department that have been there. In the recent years, Chief Mark Dolcine, myself, and now Assistant Chief Mesrich got to attend this. The makeup is all across the country, so pretty much every state's represented, and then multiple countries internationally, and the beauty of it is they get to develop partnerships and learn about things, and how things are different, and how to apply those back to your, to your city. And in this class, there was 199 people in this class from all over the world, so you got to make some great contacts and learn some pretty cutting-edge stuff when it comes to the law enforcement side of things. Assistant Chief Mesrich came to us as a youngster, what were you, 19 years old when we hired him, and has really just applied himself through the department. I think some of us were at the beginning, we're like, well, is this guy going to, yeah, no. But he did, he really did, and he's done a fantastic job, and obviously, he's in the Assistant Chief role and has held pretty much every position there is to hold within the department, so I'm very, very proud to be able to present him to you tonight as a graduate, our most recent one from the FBI National Academy, and so I present Assistant Chief Joe Mesrich.
Thank you all, I'll be brief, while my kids are still behaving. No, I appreciate the opportunity, it was an honor to represent our department and the city, and I appreciate the nomination and my family for the 10 weeks of support, so thank you.
Well, Assistant Chief, that is an incredible honor, and very well deserved, and a lot of hard work went into it, we know, so thank you very much for your continued service and for taking this on for the City of Dubuque, we appreciate it very much, thank you. All right, Trish.
Next presentation is Outstanding Organization Award to Dubuque Trees Forever.
Where's Ms. Rousseau going? No, I'm just kidding. Well, Steve, I believe you have this award to present tonight.
All right, good evening, Steve Faisal, Park Division Manager for the city. I'm going to give you a little background and then let the group speak. So on Thursday, September 14th, Dubuque Trees Forever won the Outstanding Organization Award from Trees Forever at their annual celebration in Cedar Rapids. The Outstanding Organization Award is awarded annually by Trees Forever for an organization that completed a successful tree planting, tree care, or related project in the past year. I am very thankful for the outstanding board members and volunteers of Dubuque Trees Forever that are committed to helping the city plant and maintain trees. With this amazing partnership, we continue to increase and diversify our urban canopy in Dubuque. So thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thanks.
My name is Tom Kramer, and I am the President of Dubuque Trees Forever. With me are other members of our Executive Board. We have Steve Pregler, Barbara Blisca, Cheryl Sheldon, and Lorena Schneider, and of course, everybody knows Laura. She is now our Executive, Executive Director. We're kind of reorganizing, so Laura's kind of taken the Executive Director position, I moved up into the President position. But anyway, as Steve said, September 14th last month, we were down accepting the award for the Outstanding Organization from the corporate Trees Forever of Iowa. Dubuque Trees Forever was formed January 17 by Laura. The Executive Board was formed at that time, which included the current city forester at that time, myself, Steve Pregler, retired city forester, Barbara Blisca was a forestry technician, so she knew who to reach out to, she got tree people to be with her. Since then, over 500 trees have been planted throughout the city, all done by volunteers of many groups, and there's just way too many different groups to mention, probably 20, 30, 40 different groups and other things. So we accepted the award in Marion, Iowa, but the award really goes out to all the countless number of volunteers that we've had, we're thinking it's probably over 300 different people, and 2,100 hours who have helped plant all these trees. The volunteers also continue to help us with the maintenance of them now. As you know, the summer is very dry, we spent hours on end watering trees, which we never really had to do too much of that in the past, but this year we had to do it, so we had volunteers helping us with that. We had volunteers remulching all these trees, so we've had a lot of volunteer hours doing that. The trimming of the trees was now the ones that had been about five years old, we went back to them and kind of uplifted them a little bit. So without Trees Forever, I'm not sure trees could have been planted to replace the 1,200 ash trees that we removed due to the Emerald Ash Bore, as you all know, it would just take too much time to be able to plant 500 trees. This Saturday, we will be doing our fall planting, 50 trees are going to be on our fall project, they will be planted throughout the city. Many volunteers are needed. We break out into groups of five or so, and then each group will plant five to six trees. There are smaller containers this year, so there's not going to be too much hard digging. It takes about two hours, so on a Saturday morning, all you have to do is give up two hours. We're meeting at Flora Park at 9:00 AM, so people tonight that are here, the ones that are streaming, the ones that are watching on TV, you can still sign up and help plant this Saturday. Laura showed me the volunteer list tonight, and I noticed that there was none of her coworkers on the list. So after the meeting tonight, right there, Laura's the person to contact, and you can get signed up for this Saturday. Again, I just can't say enough that this is all accomplished by the volunteers. We just push the buttons, the volunteers are the ones that do it, and the volunteers are the ones that really should be here getting this outstanding group award, but I said we'd have to go down to the Grand Harbour to get them all in there. So with that, thanks for all the help that the city gives us to accomplish what we do, and we enjoy planting trees.
Well, thank you all so much, this is not a surprise at all that you have won this award, we see the work that you do every single day, and we thank you for it, so thank you very much for being here, and congratulations. I believe we have one more.
One more presentation, and that's 3CMA Silver Circle Award for Delivering Dubuque Video Series to Felicia Connor and Mayor Brad Kavanaugh.
Randy, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City Staff, I'm Randy Gill, Public Information Officer for the city, but tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the City and County Communications and Marketing Association, also known as 3CMA, an organization I've been a member of for nearly 19 years now with my time with the city, and this is the first time we get to share news like this from 3CMA. Just a quick little bit of background, 3CMA is the nation's premier network of local government communicators, with a founding philosophy that communications are essential in helping strengthen engagement and relationships between governments and their residents, 3CMA established the Savvy Awards as a way to acknowledge professionals who effectively engage their constituents and elevate the profession. For more than 30 years, the Savvy Awards have been presented to the best in government communications. Communities around the nation compete for these annual awards, and winners are honored for creativity, planning, and carrying out successful innovations. This year, Delivering Dubuque with Mayor Kavanaugh was awarded the Second Place Silver Circle Award in the Interview/Talk Show/News Program category for communities with populations less than 100,000. The City of Dubuque was one of four communities recognized in this category during 3CMA's annual Savvy Awards ceremony held on September 7. And as you know, this video series is produced by the City of Dubuque Public Information Office staff, led by Felicia Connor, who is our multimedia producer, assisted by video producer Eric Mueller, who's in the back switching this, producing this meeting right now. We also want to give a special thank you to Mayor Kavanaugh for his willingness to put time into this, it takes a lot of time to produce these videos, and thank him for his creativity and willingness to do that work, but I'm happy to present this to Felicia on behalf of 3CMA to the City of Dubuque.
Well, this is, I understand the challenge now with this microphone. Don't worry, we're working on it, we're working on it. Just wanted to say thank you for the recognition, it's a great honor, not just for Media Services, but for the entire city. I'd like to point out that the mayor has been amazing in this collaboration, and you may not know this, but he doesn't use a teleprompter at all, so we do a lot of fun takes and retakes, and he does a great job, so really appreciate all the efforts and the collaboration with you and the challenges you help us identify and tackle. It's also a great recognition of our entire city. We wouldn't be able to do these videos, these videos without the work of all of our staff and the efforts that they put in, and that's what this series is about, so thank you so much for the recognition.
Well, Felicia, Randy, Eric, and your entire department, thank you for all the work, you are incredible to work with, and you are just incredible at what you do. It's clear when you show that, these videos and any of the other videos that you do to other people across the state and across the country, they're very impressed with what we can pull off here in-house in the City of Dubuque, so we have a real gem here, and it's very important that we continue to tell our story in this way, so thanks for all the work, we appreciate it. All right, do we get to move on to my favorite proclamation of the year?
Favorite proclamation of the year.
That's the one.
Yes.
All right, so this is it, this is one of my favorites that we get to read every single year, so.
Trick or treat night proclamation.
That's right, are we ready?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before you read your favorite proclamation.
Sure, well, you can delay my favorite proclamation for as long as you want.
Apologize, we put the wrong day in the proclamation, it says Monday, October 31st, and it's Tuesday, October 31st.
Oh, thank you very much for pointing this out, appreciate that.
It wasn't me, it was somebody else.
And I didn't look at a calendar closely enough to notice this, so thank you very much, I'll make sure I say Tuesday when I read it out loud. City of Dubuque Proclamation, whereas cornstalks, pumpkins, and a golden moon will herald the cool weather of autumn and the entertaining holiday of Halloween, and whereas Halloween is a fun, is a fun time of year when young and old become creative and emerge as ghosts, devils, witches, cartoon characters, superheroes, and more. And whereas all manner of delightful costumed individuals go from house to house on their annual journey for candy and treats, announcing their arrival with a hearty trick or treat. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, as trick or treat night during the hours of 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge all motorists to be watchful of our youngsters making their annual I expect to hear what everybody's costume will be after the meeting tonight.
Moving on to consent agenda items, at this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to have one of the items removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. Please remember to state your name and address clearly for the record. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. Please state the item you would like to remove from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Consent items can be found on pages one through four.
Thank you, Trish. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for a separate discussion this evening? I see no one here, do we have anyone virtually that we know of? We have anyone watching the virtual feed?
They were watching it in the back.
Back there, okay. I'll just ask if anybody back there then, please could let me know if there's anyone that ever wants to speak for virtually tonight. Trish, do we have anyone in City Clerk's office?
No.
Wanting to remove anything? Okay, back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, and a second by Farber. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes, 7-0.
We'll move on to the items to be set for public hearing. We have three agenda items to be set for public hearing, all for October 16th, 2023. They are the Fifth Amendment to Development Agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Port of Dubuque LLC, the First Amendment to Grant Agreement with NIA Neighborhoods Opportunity Zone Fund LLC for the rehabilitation of 1391 White Street, and the third is Fiscal Year 2024 First Budget Amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Sprank.
Second by Rousseau, second by Sprank. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Next on the agenda are public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for public hearing you would like to speak to. Please state your name and address clearly for the record. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question. Phone participants, please state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order for the participants. Tonight, we have one public hearing, and that public hearing is vacating a portion of an access and trail easement across Lot 1 of Dubuque Industrial Center South 4th Edition.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sprank. I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Sahoyus is recommending City Council adopt the attached resolution, vacate in all interest in a portion of the original access and trail easement shown on the final plat, Dubuque Industrial Center South 1st Edition through Lot 1 of Dubuque Industrial Center South 4th Edition in the City of Dubuque, as indicated on the attached exhibit. Recently, Cyple Warehouse LLC, the developer, has constructed a warehouse facility at the intersection of Cyple Road and Cottingham Road for use by the Simmons Company for their expanding business in Dubuque Industrial Center South. Because the development plans include a building location that conflicts with the existing access and trail easement on the property, the amended agreement with the developer required them to plat and dedicate an easement for the relocation of the proposed trail. The new trail easement runs along the western and southern portion of the site. The city has accepted the dedication of the newly located access and trail easement from the developer per resolution. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider vacation of a portion of an access and trail easement across Lot 1 of Dubuque Industrial Center South 4th Edition. Do we have anyone from the public to address us on this item? I see no one here, anyone virtually?
I've confirmed with Randy that it is only staff participating in the virtual meeting right now, he will let me know if anyone wants to.
Thank you, Karen, appreciate that. And no one from the City Clerk's office? All right, back to the table then, for any discussion. Seeing none. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber. Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next on the agenda is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function. And phone participants, please state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to an action item on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Trish. Do we have anyone who has any public input for us this evening? Seeing no one here. Do we have anyone virtually other than staff? Not yet. Okay. And anything from the city clerk's office this evening? Okay. All right. Seeing there's no public input, we can move on to action items.
Action item number one is small community air service development program.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ma.
I move to receive and file.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Rousseau, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Congressional representatives have notified Airport Director Todd Dulceen that the Dubuque Regional Airport and its partners will receive a $1.5 million grant through the federal government's Small Community Air Service Deployment, or SCADZI, program. Todd is here tonight to share some information with you about the SCADZI program.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Todd Dulceen, Dubuque Regional Airport. And I'm joined by Molly Grover with the Chamber of Commerce, one of our partners. So, this grant program is designed, there's a lengthy memo in your packet, of course, I'm sure you read every word of it, three pages, but just to give you a quick update, the grant program is designed to help small communities address air service issues. The SCADZI program can involve revenue guarantees, financial assistance for marketing program, startup costs and studies. So, rolling over to the end, the SCADZI, again, program is designed to help communities such as us with air service issues when positioning to return and retain daily scheduled air service. The increased SCADZI federal share will position Dubuque to be more competitive with other national commercial airports. And the strategic plan for the new grant is to provide non-stop, daily scheduled service to a hub and improve the regional connections to the nation and the world for business and leisure travel. So, I guess one point to note is this is in addition to an existing grant we have. So, in 2020, we received the SCADZI grant for $775,000 of federal funds. That coupled with our public-private partnerships, we have $1.3 million. This new grant, we're adding $725,000 for a total of just over $2 million. So, I'm happy to answer any questions or if Molly would like to add a few words.
Sure.
Thank you, Todd. Do we have any questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Yes, thank you. So, it can be used for many different reasons. And I know that you have a plan and this fits in the plan. Could you talk to our citizens about what's going on with the airport and how we're working and your staff is working and also the Dubuque Chamber and Mr. Mayor here is also on the group, the core group? Could you tell them what we're doing and the prospects?
Sure, yeah. I'd be happy to get it started. Of course, Mr. Mayor can chime in and of course Molly is here as well. But it is a true private-public partnership. The Airport Commission is working with the City of Dubuque, Dubuque County, the Chamber, Greater Dubuque Development, Travel Dubuque, and hoping I'm not missing anybody, then the Iowa DOT Aviation. So, in that partnership, we've worked in a couple of different organizations. There's been a chamber-led air service task force that meets monthly that has been working on air service issues even prior to COVID and, you know, adding service. So, if you all remember back in 2019, just prior to COVID, when we had this initial SCADZI grant, we still had American Airlines operating out of Dubuque. We were about to ink a deal with SkyWest or United under SkyWest with service to Denver. And we had Sun Country providing destinational charters. Then, as you all know, COVID hit. Pilot shortages is real. There's still quite a pilot shortage, plus increase in costs, operating costs for the air carriers as in fuel, pilot wages. I can, you know, go on and on with that one. So, kind of an evolution of the Air Service Task Force, the CAS, the mayor worked with the partnership and formed a commercial air service team. We currently meet every week, every Thursday at 9:00 AM. And there's, I don't have the mission and goals right in front of me, but ultimately, the goal is to restore daily scheduled service and also retain the ultra-low-cost carrier service and add to that as well. So.
Thank you very much. And the prospects?
Prospects? You know, it's a fight and it's definitely a marathon. It's not a sprint. So, we do, the airport does also, we have an air service consultant. His name's Matt Skinner with Global Flight. And he's kind of our point of the spear, if you will, in meeting with the air carriers on a, quite honestly, a daily occurrence. He meets with not only the, you know, major carriers or the larger carriers like your American, United, Delta, Southwest, but also with regional carriers and then even some smaller carriers. So, he's keeping us front and center with those folks. And, you know, we're just waiting for the, get a few more pilots in the stream. And this SCADZI grant will definitely help out our toolbox, a bigger tool, if you will. We had a $1.3 million tool to negotiate with. Now we've got just over a $2 million tool.
Thank you very much. And I was hoping that Ms. Grover would also talk to the citizens about what their chamber is doing, not just for the businesses, but everybody in the community.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Good evening, City Council. Mr. Mayor, great to be here. I want to start by saying a big thank you for your unwavering support and your attention and your priority on restoring and enhancing air service in our community. It truly takes a partnership. And so, the chamber in partnership with all the organizations that Todd just identified, it is our relentless pursuit of continuing the work that is going to result in our restoring daily commercial air service at the Dubuque Regional Airport. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So, this commercial air service team that we're talking about and the attention to the relationships with legacy and regional carriers are ongoing. It's not just a one-and-done where you have one meeting and then, oh, maybe we'll have a meeting a couple of years from now. Talking to the carriers all the time and having the relationship with our consultant out there representing us on a daily basis is really important. We're working on a feasibility study. That's a public-private partnership where we're really trying to gather the data that is going to help us align our strategies to be successful in the outcomes that we seek. And it is not only a feasibility study that includes the business community, it's going to be a feasibility study that also includes public feedback as well. So, there's more to come about that. We will share that data with the community at large later this year. We're working with a consulting company. But the pursuit, once again, of restoring air service, we really have to have a diverse portfolio if we're going to be successful in the long term of making sure that we have air service now and in the future. Adding Avelo was a huge win, getting points on the board, getting those wins. Service begets service. So, the more service that we have is going to result in more service. The single most important thing that we can do right now to ensure that we have air service in the future is to support and fly Dubuque as often as possible. Because we know that when we support our local regional airport, when we fly Avelo right now because we have an ultra-low-cost carrier, that that results in additional service. We had Las Vegas just start service on September 13th, and that was without additional request for a minimum revenue guarantee. That's a big deal. That's demonstration by Avelo, a great partner, that they believe in our market, we're capturing market share that we did not have before. That is just part of the picture to have diverse air service portfolio out of the Dubuque Regional Airport. I'm so grateful to all our partners. Doesn't happen in a vacuum. It happens because we work together. We all sing the same music off the same piece of paper and we are just relentless in our pursuit. So, thank you to Mr. Mayor, thank you to Todd, my partner in crime. We are working to live, eat, breathe, sleep, restoring air service from the Dubuque Regional Airport. Thank you.
Well, and thank you both very much. And, Mr. Mayor, I hope you don't mind if I ask you, as the third leg of the stool here, of being, I know you've done so much work on this. Would you mind talking about your experience and maybe prospects and what you've been doing to help the community? Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Resnick. And thank you very much, Molly and Todd, and everybody who works with the commercial air service team. So, we really did put together what we tried to create a broad spectrum of leaders within the community to be able to have this discussion and really move it forward. You know, Todd mentioned that there are five different pieces to what CAS is really trying to accomplish. So, I'll just mention those because I did write them down here. But more than anything, I want to make sure that I'm really clear on the fact that we are, we're working on, the piece that's being worked on the most right now is completing this study. We've actually finished surveying the business community and we're moving on to the public next. And as we do that, we will be giving that information to the rest of the community and really giving a full, solid update on what's really going on, kind of a larger version of what we're discussing here. The direct contact with the airlines is number one. Obviously, that's where we're spending a ton of our time and that's what Molly and Todd already talked about. The next is actually federal and state advocacy. So, this is, the SCADZI grant that we are receiving and filing tonight is the direct result of that advocacy. And we were all a part of it. We know, when we were in Washington DC together, we had discussions with the Department of Transportation and the FAA. We had discussion with our congressional delegation. These were the folks that helped us. They were very much our partners in this, to be able to direct us in the right place and provide this funding to us. So, we've been waiting for this expectantly and very, very excited to receive it. The third is the Fly Dubuque Experience, which really is, you know, if there's something we can control, it's what people experience when they come to the Dubuque Regional Airport. So, Todd, Travel Dubuque, the DRA, have all been very, very instrumental in making sure that those folks that are currently flying Avelo are having the best possible experience that you can have when you're getting ready to fly and when you're coming off those planes. And they're doing a great job with that. The fourth is collaborating with other affected airports. This is a piece that is still kind of out there. We haven't been able to pursue it as much because what we discovered very early is that everybody's in a very different situation. There are a few airports like us that have lost all air service, but not that many. And none of us are really the same and we're in very different situations. So, while we're paying very close attention and staying in touch with other airports and other cities that are in this situation, this isn't an area that we found is a lot of place to put attention currently. And the final is local collaboration and partnerships to restore air service. This is generally the idea that if there's a way that we can entice an airline to come to Dubuque and we can do it together, sometimes that means financially, sometimes that means in partnership in different ways, we are going to do everything we can. And that's kind of where that study that we're currently going through fits in. So, hopefully, that's a good update for kind of where things are and what we're doing. But this grant is, this is a major, major piece of the puzzle. So, we're very excited to have it here.
Thank you all. And as everyone knows, this is our top, one of our top priorities here, to bring air service back, full air service back to the citizens of Dubuque. So, thank you all very much as far as from my concern. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any others? All right. Well, Todd, Molly, thank you very much for being here tonight. We appreciate the update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right. Well, the motion here is to receive and file this. So, Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number two is U.S. Department of Commerce invests $7.7 million for flood protection infrastructure in Dubuque, Iowa.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Mike, am I coming to you on this one?
Yes, thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. The City of Dubuque has been awarded a $7.7 million grant from the U.S. Department of Commerce's Economic Development Administration, or EDA, to improve flood prevention infrastructure and help protect homes and businesses from future flooding. The funding will replace the floodgates which protect the city from the Mississippi River flooding, as well as provide for new pumps with double the existing pumping capacity, reducing the impacts of heavy rainfall and flooding in the community. The project is expected to create 150 jobs and help generate approximately $16.5 million in private investment. The grant will go toward the $26.7 million project to build and install a new stormwater pumping station along Kerper Boulevard at the 16th Street Detention Basin. This new infrastructure will provide the city with additional flexibility in managing water levels in the detention basin, will also assist with flood control and allow for future expansion in the event that flood events become more frequent in the future. President Biden's Investing in America agenda is providing communities in Iowa and across the country with the resources they need to grow their local economies following flooding and other natural disasters, said Secretary of Commerce Gina Raimondo. This EDA investment will protect the City of Dubuque from future flooding, supporting business growth and the creation of new jobs in the community. "We are grateful to the Department of Commerce, the Biden administration and our federal legislators for this major grant," said Dubuque Mayor Brad Kavanaugh. "It is a significant boost for this project to improve our flood protection infrastructure and our community's resiliency. Since 1999, Dubuque has experienced six flood events which drew presidential disaster declarations. These storms have occurred with increased intensity and frequency and that timeframe necessitated the adding flood control, the added flood control measures. Iowans are no strangers to natural disasters and Dubuque has been proactively working hard to strengthen flood protection, flood prevention throughout the city. This disaster grant will help make additional progress to protect neighborhoods and businesses and promote economic development throughout the community," said Senator Chuck Grassley. "The project, a phase of the B-Branch Watershed Flood Mitigation Project, will benefit residents and businesses along the Kerper Boulevard corridor whose properties lie within the 100-year floodplain. This includes the entire Kerper Boulevard Industrial Park, home to several large employers. And it's important to point out that the work the city's already done on the B-Branch has increased the flood protection for these neighborhoods from a, protection from a 75-year storm to protection from a 500-year storm that exists today. This project was made possible in part by the regional planning efforts led by the East Central Intergovernmental Association, or ECIA, who helped bring together the public and private sectors to create an economic development roadmap to strengthen the regional economy, support private capital investment and create jobs."
Thank you, Mike. This is incredibly welcome news. I know that we've all been very excited to see this come our way. So, we just cannot say enough thanks to our federal partners for making this happen. And this is definitely, when I said piece of a puzzle before, this is an incredibly important piece of the puzzle when we're talking about flood water. So, any other discussion or questions this evening? Yeah, Ms. Wethel?
I would just say, in a time in which we're really trying to partner with local development and community members and do our part when it comes to infrastructure, leveraging relationships to get this sort of funding is huge. And so, I feel that this is a great example of how we are doing our part for infrastructure to protect homes, businesses, families of Dubuque. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Very well said. All right. Well, thank you very much to all. The motion here is to receive and file. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Just a reminder that action item number three has been pulled from the agenda and will appear on the next city council agenda. Action item number four, First Amendment to Grant Agreement with Virtual Velocity LLC for the rehabilitation of 1199 Central Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving a First Amendment to the grant agreement- adopt the attached resolution approving a First Amendment to the grant agreement with Virtual Velocity LLC to provide the project a $300,000 loan to be amortized over five years at 0% interest. The city Dubuque previously entered into a grant agreement dated October 3, 2022. This property is the former Prescott Elementary School. Virtual Velocity LLC is a local organization entering into building preservation and rehabilitation. Lloyd Singletary, organizer, is restoring the building's facade while creating 14 new market rate rental units. In August 2022, and again in August 2023, at the city council annual goal-setting sessions, the city council identified the Central Avenue corridor revitalization as a priority. In August 2022, the city council established housing incentives as a priority. Previously, the city council has directed that the city should work on not having former school sites stay vacant and become blighting influences on neighborhoods. Now, a brief history of the Third Ward Schoolhouse. In 1856, a new building was constructed at 12th and Clay Streets, now Central Avenue, to house the Third Ward School. The structure had a cross plan and was of the Italianate style popular at the time. It had load-bearing masonry brick walls with a strong Dubuque limestone foundation and water table. The building had large windows affording light and ventilation for a healthy learning environment. The structure is a rare, pre-Civil War public structure and eligible for the National Register of Historic Places based on criteria and C due to it being a rare surviving early architectural type and its association with Dubuque architect John Francis Regg. The cost for the structure was $25,000, constructed by builders Barry, Platter, and Longhurst. It opened in January 1857, one month before the construction began on nearby City Hall, which was also designed by Regg. By 1858, it also housed our first Dubuque senior high school on the third floor with elementary grades below. The high school enrolled 110 students and had a staff of two teachers and one principal. Students wishing to be admitted to the high school had to pass a test in arithmetic, geography, grammar, and history. The first two floors were divided into four rooms each with children separated by gender and the level of achievement. The building was named the Prescott School after the American scientific historian William Hickling Prescott in 1889. In 1911, the old schoolhouse housed 603 students from 170 square block area and 19 rooms with 21 teachers. The high school had since moved to a new building kitty-corner to the northeast of the old school. In April 1912, merchants on Clay Street petitioned the Board of Education to close the school because it was unsafe. The noise distracted the pupils and the traffic was a hazard. A formal petition to build a new school was filed on August 8, 1912. In 1913, the new Prescott School made the first Prescott School obsolete. The listing in the city directories changes from Prescott School to Prescott Apartments between 1913 and 1915. In 2006, the current Prescott School was opened and demolition of the 1912 school ensued. Apartment rentals of 1199 Central tapered off in the early 21st century and ended by 2015, according to the city directory. It has been licensed as a vacant and abandoned building since 2019. The other ward school buildings that resembled this structure are all gone, including the school that predated the former Franklin School at 39 Bluff and the schools that predated the existing Lincoln and Audubon Schools. 1199 Central bears many resemblances to the old St. Mary's Jackson Street School, now France's Apartments, which was successfully restored and converted to 12 apartments in 2017, serving as a model for the work being done at the old Third Ward School. This building has been vacant for many years and was a blighting influence on the neighborhood. Lloyd Singletary took it upon himself to acquire the building and begin a redevelopment project to create the market rate apartments. Not only does this project hit several city council priorities, but this rehabilitation project is very important to the city because it is in a strategic location for the city and that it is directly across the street from the existing Prescott Elementary School and it directly adjoins the Multicultural Family Center. The difficulties with this project are leading to the recommendation to include a $300,000 loan to be amortized over five years at 0% interest. Funding for this loan will come from the Downtown Rehabilitation Loan Fund. Since the initial grant agreement was executed, the city council has given additional support to the creation of housing in the greater downtown urban renewal area. Multifamily housing creation projects are now eligible for either 10 years of tax abatement, followed by five years of tax increment financing, or 15 years of tax increment financing. That amendment for this project development agreement requires a public hearing and will be on a future city council agenda. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. What discussion or questions do we have?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I was curious if the structural integrity of this building has been determined and how it was determined.
Yes, thank you for asking. So, I'm disappointed in myself because I looked at who I copied on this memo and while I included Jill Connors, who was very involved in our economic development projects and rehabilitation projects, I did not include Alexis Steger, our Housing Community Development Director, who was involved in this particular deliberation about this loan. And she and Michael Belmont, our Assistant Housing and Community Development Director and our building official, did inspect the property before she discussed with Mr. Singletary this loan. And I believe Alexis is out in the hallway or?
I'm online, Mike.
Okay. I will give Alexis credit. She's the one that noticed the Halloween thing was wrong. So, since she's on the record now. But anyway, so Alexis, did you want to help address Councilmember Resnick's question, please?
He actually cut out, can you repeat the question for me?
Yes, I was hoping you might tell us, including the citizens, about whether or not the structural integrity has been determined and how it was determined. Thank you.
Yeah, we did not have any concerns about the structure. The structure has many Ys of brick. So, the exterior that you see is a facade brick. And there is tuck pointing that is going to be done that is not completed, but that is not part of the structural integrity of the structure. So, there are no concerns with that structural integrity of that building. It has just an interior structure that is solid and isn't showing any signs of moving or any issues.
And, Mr. Mayor, I might also add that Mr. Singletary is in the audience, the owner of the property, if he wanted to, I don't know if he wanted to add anything.
You're free to, Mr. Singletary, if you'd like to.
Okay. And then while I'm still talking with you, Mr. Steger, you didn't tell me who determined that by site or did you have a study done? Or how is it that you say that there's nothing wrong with the interior?
So, Mr. Singletary can actually speak to his engineers that have been on that building and plans that have been submitted to the department. So, all of the permits that were pulled and we review all those documents that come from the engineers and architects. So, he may actually be able to speak more to who those people are and what they've produced.
Thank you very much, Mr. Singletary. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. So, actually, before I even purchased the building, I brought a team of architects and engineers through from FEH Design. That's a local company that's right at 10th and Main Street. So, there were two engineers, actually, three engineers that walked it before I even purchased the building. And I asked them, I said, find anything, look for anything, find anything that could be wrong structurally with this building. And they didn't find anything. They didn't see anything. It was literally before closing that this was done because I wanted to make sure that there was nothing wrong with the building structurally. And to Alexis's point, part of the reason that the building is so sound structurally is because of its build. The same way that City Hall is built is the way that this building was built. They were built around the same time, I imagine, probably by the same builders. But literally, on the foundation that goes, we looked, it was four or five feet down into the dirt, it's 24 inches wide limestone foundation. And then on top of it is another three layers of brick that go all the way up. But then there is a facade layer of brick with a two-inch air gap. And the building is a rectangle, but it's cut out with rectangles. So, literally, you could literally have each quadrant stay and exist on its own because it was overbuilt. When we walked through, one of the things I always like to tout is the soundproof quality of the building because when you have 13 inches of brick between the next apartment, there's no way to hear. So, that, it may look bad on the outside in some areas, but that's because the overhang was taken away. But literally, you could rip off the facade layer of brick and the building would still stand in its own right because the facade that you see has nothing to do with the structure.
And thank you for that. But I'd like to apologize because I should have invited you to say your name and your address before speaking.
Sorry. I'm Lloyd Singletary. I live at 955 Washington in Dubuque.
I appreciate your investment in this building. I mean, it's right, right in the middle of downtown and it gets a little, it's big. It's a, right now, it's a big eyesore and I'm looking forward to this becoming a beautiful place to live. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
I just want to say thank you. I've heard so many wonderful things about the anticipation of your development and your commitment to the community and to the downtown area, to Ward Forward and the people I serve. The location could not be more perfect, to be near a school, to be near our Multicultural Family Center. Just, it's, it's just perfect. And so, the commitment to rehabilitate and reactivate buildings like this, it truly takes commitment and it takes work and hours of just navigating the processes. And so, thank you for putting in your sweat equity to this project.
I'm happy to. It's part of my dream.
Good. Thank you, Mayor.
Any others? Mr. Jones, haven't forgotten about you. Anything from you?
I'm doing well. Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. And I'll just, I'll just add, along with the thanks, Mr. Singletary, and for being here tonight to help us understand this a little bit more. This is a bit different. This is not something we've normally done before, but I very much appreciate the explanation for why this is required, why this is necessary and recommended by our, by our city manager. And I do look forward to voting for it. All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Singletary. That's all we need from you, I think. Our motion here on the table is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So, Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passed at seven zero.
Action item number five is awarding public improvement construction contract for the Chaplain Schmidt Island Trail Connection Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Assistant City Engineer Bob Schissel is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution to award the public improvement contract, the Chaplain Schmidt Island Trail Connection Project, to Midwest Concrete in the amount of $696,632.33, subject to the Iowa Department of Transportation concurrence and approval of award. In October of 2022, the city council approved the funding agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation to construct a 10-foot-wide multi-use trail along Admiral Sheehy Drive from 16th Street to the Veterans Memorial on Chaplain Schmidt Island. The funding agreement allows the city Dubuque to use $615,000 in a community project funding grant resulting from the work of Congresswoman Ashley Hinson. The trail project will complement the design elements incorporated as part of the Veterans Memorial and the Chaplain Schmidt Island Development Master Plan. Engineering staff coordinated with Leisure Services and the DRA Chaplain Schmidt Island Development Team on the design of the trail and trailhead. The engineering department completed the construction document development and will be responsible for construction administration and inspection. Chaplain Schmidt Island Trail Connection will provide installation of a 10-foot-wide multi-use trail along Admiral Sheehy Drive from 16th Street to the Veterans Memorial on Chaplain Schmidt Island and will include the following elements: excavation to allow for the installation of the trail, installation of a base stone for the trail, installation of a 10-foot-wide, six-foot inch-thick concrete trail, installation of retaining walls where needed due to topography to accommodate the trail. This includes decorative railing matching what is used at the Veterans Memorial, installation of a six-inch-thick decorative concrete trailhead plaza, installation of parking to accommodate ADA parking near the trail and trailhead, installation of decorative lighting to illuminate the trail and trailhead, installation of an emergency phone tower, restoration of disturbed area with topsoil and seed. The schedule for the Chaplain Schmidt Island Trail Connection Project is scheduled to start construction no later than May 15, 2024, and the estimated completion date is August 2024. Bids were received on the project by the Iowa Department of Transportation on September 19, 2023, in Ames. Midwest Concrete submitted the low bid in the amount of $696,632.33. This bid amount is 15.4% below the estimate of probable cost. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any questions or discussion? Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
I know many folks will be very happy to see this because they just, as Mr. Resnick has said, we want connection on the island. So, I'm excited to see this moving forward and can't wait for it next summer, though. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Van Milligan, do we still have a local preference when it comes to these contracts? A long time ago, we used to say, well, if it's in one, within 1% and the folks are local. Now, Piazzas is pretty local. So, it doesn't really necessarily have to do with this. But do we have any kind of local preference when we talk about awarding contracts?
So, we're not allowed to have a local preference on construction contracts. But when you're purchasing equipment, I believe our policy is a 5% local preference if the business is located within the city limits of Dubuque. That's my recollection.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Mike?
To add one other thing tangentially related. So, Wednesday, October 11, at 5:00 PM, we're going to have a ceremony for the section of the trail that's already completed, that is just being completed right now. And so, we'll have a little ceremony down there and we're hoping to have some bicyclists down there to help us celebrate the opening of that section of the bike trail.
I don't know any bicyclists here, so. Be happy to be there. Excellent. Thank you very much, Mike, for that information. All right. Well, seeing no further questions or discussion, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Action item number six is McCoy Group, Inc., easement.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file and approve the easement.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Farber and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. The development agreement between the city of Dubuque and McCoy Group provided for the sale of a parking lot by the city to McCoy Group. The development agreement also required the parties to agree to certain easements related to the parking lot and the building purchased by McCoy Group. The McCoy Group property is leased to an affiliate, MGI Leasing. The parties have agreed to the language in the attached easement agreement. Senior Council Barry Lindahl is recommending city council approval of the easement agreement with McCoy Group. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Just for clarification on the motion, Ms. Farber, I heard you say approve the easement. You want to approve the easement agreement that is before us this evening?
As amended. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. All right. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing no questions or discussion, the motion here is to receive and file and approve the agreement. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Action item number seven is request for work session streets program.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and set the work session for Monday, November 20, at 5:30 PM.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Russell, second by Sprank. Here's the works. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number eight is request for work session railroad quiet zone study.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and set the work session for Monday, December 4, at 5:30 PM.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Also appears it works. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number nine is Mayor Kavanaugh named President-elect of Iowa League of Cities Board.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and convey our congratulations.
Second by Barber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Barber. Well, thank you very much. It is an honor to serve. Yeah, Mike.
The privilege of reading immediately.
Oh, that's right, yeah, you probably still want to read stuff, sure, go for it.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. So, it's titled Dubuque Mayor Brad Kavanaugh selected as President-elect of the Iowa League of Cities Executive Board. Dubuque Mayor Brad Kavanaugh will serve as the President-elect of the Iowa League of Cities Executive Board for the coming year. Mayor Kavanaugh was elected to the position at the league's annual conference and exhibit earlier this month. Mayor Kavanaugh will serve as President-elect until the league's conference in 2024. The President-elect is typically elected president the following year. Mayor Kavanaugh has been a member of the executive board since 2020. Mayor Kavanaugh was sworn in as Dubuque's mayor in January 2022 after winning election to the post the previous November. He was first elected to the city council as the representative for Dubuque's Fourth Ward in 2019. Prior to his time on the city council, he was a member of the city's housing commission, has been a member of the Board of Directors of both the Dubuque County Food Policy Council and the Fountain of Youth Program, and helped co-found Resources Unite. The Iowa League of Cities, which celebrates its 125th anniversary in 2023, serves as the unified voice of cities across Iowa, providing advocacy, training, and guidance to strengthen the state's communities. Its executive board is responsible for adopting policies to provide direction to the league, adopting the annual operating budget, establishing membership fees, and providing direction to the organization. The board consists of 14 board director positions and five officer positions, president, president-elect, and three past presidents. All of these positions must be filled by current city officials who represent cities of various populations and geographic locations. And congratulations, Mayor Kavanaugh.
Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate that. Yes, thank you. It's very kind of you, I appreciate it. You know, I'll mention, just so everybody knows here at this table and in the community, you know, when this possibility arose after some of my time in service on the exec board with the Iowa League, the first question that I had was, is this good for Dubuque? Does it help Dubuque if I try to go into this position and throw my hat in the ring? And the resounding answer was yes. And the reason is, you know, the Iowa League of Cities serves a very important function in Iowa, and I think now more than ever, when we have a situation where we really, we are struggling to have a good agreement across the state on how cities need to function separately from our state legislature and how we can make sure that cities are able to have the local freedom to do what they need to do. So, I think it's a really important time that we all take in a strong role in advocacy to stand up for cities and the things that we need locally. And I very much appreciate the Iowa League for the work that they do. The people that I serve on the board with are incredible public servants. There are city managers, some of them, some of them are city council members, city clerks as well are on that board, and then also some other, several mayors that are across the state. So, cities of all sizes. So, that's the beauty of this organization is we are all speaking with a unified voice. And I very much look forward to serving in this role and thank you very much for recognizing it tonight. Well, the motion there is to receive and file. So, Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next on the agenda are council member reports.
All right, thank you. Trish, Ms. Russell.
Yes, I was thrilled to travel to Mexico City last week with our outstanding Director of Sustainability, Gina Bell, to participate in the Cities Forward Program. The Cities Forward Program is a collective initiative between the United States Department of State, Local Governments for Sustainability, Resilient Cities Catalyst, and the Institute of the Americas. And there was no cost to the city for our participation. And we were one of 12 U.S. cities that were selected for this project. And each U.S. city is partnered with one of the 12 Latin American or Caribbean cities to develop sustainable and resilient projects. So, our partner city is going to be Armacio, Mexico. And even though Dubuque was one of the smaller communities there, everyone was really impressed with what we are doing here, like the B-branch, the renewable natural gas facilities, and so much more. And the organizers were very impressed with the application that Gina filed for Dubuque that showcased our efforts here, and they were really excited to meet her. Not me so much, but they really, they really wanted to meet her. So, in this session, we worked side by side with representatives from Ecuador, Colombia, Brazil, Jamaica, Chile, Mexico, Bahamas, Guatemala, and Argentina. And interpreters were provided for, even for the small group activities. So, whether they were speaking Spanish, English, or Portuguese, everyone could fully participate. And even though all the communities were very different, from different places and different sizes, we all found many commonalities and found ways that we can help and learn from each other to support sustainability and resiliency work that's going to make our community and the earth better. It was a fabulous experience. It's an ongoing three-year project, and I'm so grateful that I could participate and I was so proud to be a Dubuqueer. And if I may, a second topic. I'd like to invite all of our residents to help us bring trees to our community this Saturday at 9:00 AM. If you want to sign up, it's www.dubutreesforever.org. You can be part of leaving a green legacy for your community. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Russell. Thank you so much for taking the time. It is not easy to travel in that way, to such a far location to be able to do this. So, thank you for your service in that way. Other council member reports this evening. Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, I want to talk about, we recently had a boards and commission picnic at Eagle Point Park. The mayor was there along with several student council, city council members.
It's not even that late yet.
And just, I want to amplify what the mayor said at that meeting, which was that we really appreciate the work that the citizens do to help us become the best city we can be. I mean, one of the reasons Dubuque is doing so well is we have broad, we have broad participation in very important boards and commissions. So, I would hope that folks who are interested in Dubuque, in their neighborhoods, in this region, to come out and volunteer to be a part of those boards and commissions and then maybe go plant some trees. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
I have the privilege to serve on the Dubuque County Early Childhood Board, and this Saturday, down at the Grand River Center is our Kids Expo. And so, just wanted to let everyone know at home, it starts at 10:00 AM, and it'll be a great place for families to go, learn about resources, and have a lot of fun. So, hope everybody can come down and join us.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Sprank.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This weekend, we had a few things, as usual, going on in our community. Sunday, there was a lovely, almost kind of wrapping up a 10-year anniversary of the Stipple Square Organization. They had a community event on Sunday afternoon, a lot of lovely families running around. It was really nice to see. And then I know a few of us were invited to a housing forum that we had a lovely, well, wasn't so lovely, but difficult conversations with folks that are having housing issues in our community, so. But otherwise, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Mr. Resnick, oh, yeah, Mr. Jones? Mr. Resnick's pointing at the ceiling, that's you.
Well, I'm fine.
All right, excellent. He's been very fine all evening long, that's wonderful, yeah. Well, as usual, there's a lot going on.
I've never quite got along with iPhone and it's, I'm trying to do this meeting by iPhone with my left hand and online with my right eye, and it's very confusing.
Well, we're sorry for the challenges that are happening there, but thank you very much for being here. It has been a busy couple of weeks. There's been a lot going on, and I appreciate the fact that we are serving on a council filled with so many people who want to continue to be a major part of the community in this way. So, thank you to everyone for going to where you have been going the last few weeks. The only thing I would add to the other events that have already been mentioned, there's a great Latinx Fiesta that happened on Saturday. It was absolutely incredible. It was just such a great experience. It was loud, it was vibrant, there were people everywhere, just packed, all 8th Street right next to the courthouse right there. It was a very fun event and some of the best food that I've had in a very long time. But it was wonderful to see community come out in that way. You sort of felt transported in a way when you were there. So, I really appreciate the organizers for that and putting that together. All right, well, with that, we do have a closed session this evening, so I would take a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move that we go into closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5.1 of the Code of Iowa to discuss...
It appears to be pending litigation and purchase of real estate.
Okay, pending litigation and purchase of real estate.
Purchase or sale of real estate, I should say, it says right there.
Yes.
All right, wonderful. So, that's motion by Ms. Russell.
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Resnick.